Welcome to the 5:30 PM, January 12th Special City Council Meeting for CDBG Grants. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
My pledge to the flag is that we are the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Sign-up cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Comments made under public comment must relate directly to the agenda items. No sign-up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all agenda items. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council shall be placed in the box on the table in the council chamber.
Thank you very much. The City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Administratively, we'd like to change the order of the meeting, putting item number two first, and that will be one that you will be voting on. And then, item one will become the second item in your agenda, which will be the presenters in the presentation.
Okay. Do we need to make a?
No, you need to vote. I was just letting you know, procedurally, that's what we're going to do tonight.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Sure, if you want to.
Okay, I have a motion from Member Nelson, second from?
Second.
Member Stokoe. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Carries.
So, item two is the FY 23 Brevard County Home Distribution Disbursement Agreement Approval and Budget Amendment. Annually, the city receives home investment partnership grant funding as a result of its participation in the Brevard County Home Consortium. The consortium consists of cities of Titusville, Melbourne, Palm Bay, and Brevard County as the lead. Each year, Brevard County distributes to consortium members an allocation through the execution of the Home Program Disbursement Agreement. This agreement allocates the city's share of the home grant funds and sets parameters of their use. Staff is recommending that you approve the grant dispersment agreement with Brevard County for continuation of the home grant program and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement and approve the associated budget amendments.
Thank you. Council, any questions or comments on that? Member Nelson?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, no worries. With that, I don't have any cards to call. No cards to call? Good, that takes care of that. I need a motion. Do we need to read that out? Oh, we got?
Honestly couldn't hear the motion, so I couldn't.
Well, okay, well, he didn't say anything except he said move, motion, so.
We need a motion to approve, if that's the motion.
Motion to approve.
All right, and I have a motion by Member, what's your name over there? Uh, anyway.
George.
With that, I was taking a nap there for a second.
Oh, it wasn't me.
Uh, Member Cole makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Member Cole, I tried to clarify, because there's a couple of parts to this.
Uh-oh.
It's a motion, uh, your motion to approve the Grant Disbursement Agreement of Brevard County and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement and approve the associated budget amendments.
Yeah, what he said.
Wouldn't have been better if I couldn't remember your name?
Yeah.
All right, there we go. I've got a motion from Member Cole, clarified by City Attorney. I have a second.
And it still holds.
By Member Nelson. Uh, let's go real call vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Passed unanimously. City Manager.
Now, we're back to item number one, which is the Community Development Block Grant, CBGG 2022 Annual Report and the FY 2024 Request for Proposals. And staff's recommending that you receive this program annual report, and Terry Franklin will be presenting. And then you have comments from agencies seeking CBGG grants for funding in FY 24. Now, you won't be taking any action tonight on any of the presentations. We'll come back to you after we do examinations and score those particular proposals.
And that will be part of a council meeting, correct?
Be part of a regular meeting.
As I recall it.
Yes, sir.
All right, so you guys will give us an idea of what this is all about, and then the presenters will present. Okay?
All right, good evening. We have a presentation here on, well, it won't stand still. There we go. Um, okay, so, um, let's see, does this work? Yes. So, the annual performance report for our CDBG program for public comment. This gives an overview of who the Neighborhood Services Department are for managing the grants of CDBG Home and CHIP, and we have occasionally other specialized grants that we get throughout the year. Our mission for developing our action plan, this all leads into developing an action plan for the grant programs for 2324. Pages are all stuck together. So, through that process, we're going to develop a plan that provides supportive services to ensure all of our citizens, regardless of income, have a decent and safe place to live. We strive to maintain economic stability. We ensure that programs are appropriate to community needs. We look at the history and needs and demographics as we put together the plan, and we design those plans that address needs related to revitalization, preservation, and needs of our residents. So, the plan will break down our objectives. We'll have revitalization objectives. We'll have preservation objectives. We'll have needs of our citizens in various categories as outlined in the plan. We'll have specific housing objectives. Our home grant can only be used for housing. CDBG can be used for housing as well, but amongst other things. So, we have a specific housing element of the plan that we put together each year. During the implementation phase of the plan, we look at various conditions. We conduct surveys, and we listen to our residents and program participants on how to design a plan that meets all of those needs. We develop goals and objectives, and we undertake initiatives that are compatible to our mission. We also plan for change. We have to monitor how the plan is working from year to year, make sure it meets our needs and any unmet needs that are not being met through our sub-receipients. We secure support for activities by establishing priorities and limitations and opportunities. We meet with the community and gain their support. In doing so, we meet with residents and stakeholders, and we target programs to the right market and properties. We analyze organizational staffing and our ability of consultants and contractors to help us through the process, and we also inventory potential partners from year to year. So, our CDBG program, which is our Community Development Block Grant, that comes through HUD, it's federal funds. This outlines a breakdown of how that grant works. Up to 15% can be set aside for public services through our nonprofit agencies. This year, we have an exception, and for the next four years, with the approval of our Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy area, that allows us flexibility to increase that percentage. Up to 20% can be for admin cost, and the remainder of the grant is used to serve low and moderate income households through housing, economic development, infrastructure, and revitalization activities. A couple of years ago, we were the recipient of a CDBG coronavirus grant. That is also federal funds through HUD, and we've been utilizing that grant to provide subsidy payments to those impacted households with rent utilities and mortgages. The home grant, we receive the federal funds through the Brevard County Home Consortium through the dispersment agreement that you approved earlier. 15% of those funds must be set aside to community housing development organizations for affordable housing. Up to 10% we can utilize for administration, and the remainder of the funds can be for various housing activities. That, the home grant, requires a match from non-federal funds, so we utilize our CHIP grant for that match. So, to give you a recap of 2122, this gives you a snapshot of the available revenues we had between the CDBG and the home grant program. And you'll see the majority of that was prior-year funds that remained unspent from 2021. Last year, we expended just over $536,000, which left a balance of over $867,000. I just wanted to take a moment there, because that always seems like a large number, but um, just to put it in perspective, going into this year, only $25,000 of that is unencumbered at this point. So, you ha, we have ongoing projects such as infrastructure and other housing projects that will spend those, those funds. So, last year for public services, we had three nonprofit agencies that we worked with. We also did some sidewalk infill improvements and ADA ramps in partnership with the Public Works Department. So, this kind of outlines the ongoing funded programs that I was talking about. We have the Neighborhood Revitalization Program, our sidewalks, first-time homebuyer, and then our COVID assistance programs. For, I, this outlines some of the programs, the assisted residents of Titusville. Last year, we had our Housing Rehab Program, our First-Time Homebuyer Program, the people that were served through public services, the sidewalks that were installed, and the COVID-related assistance. So, that ends the performance report for last year. Before we get into this year's strategies and hearing from our agencies, if we want to hear if there are any public comments on the annual report at this time, we can open that up.
Member Cole, you have a question?
Oh, no, I don't. I'm sorry.
Okay, no worries. Member Stokoe?
Yep. Thank you. I always like these presentations. My question is, and it might be more so maybe for the next portion, as we go through these, because I've done quite a few now, do we ever find that there are nonprofits that are potentially requesting funding, but they don't meet our specific metrics that we set up? And have we had to address, adjust them throughout the years at all to try to help serve our citizens more?
Are, are you talking about agencies that we funded, but they're not performing? Or?
No, I'm talking about, so I know that we have funded several different agencies, but I also, I'm wondering or concerned, are there other nonprofits or agencies that are trying to do things, but they don't necessarily align with the metrics that we set up? And so, have we ever looked at that to see if we would need to adjust them, or are we allowed to adjust them?
Um, I'm not aware of any of our matrix that would prevent a nonprofit from applying for funding. The only criteria with HUD is that they serve low and moderate income?
Okay.
People, so as long as their program is within those boundaries, then?
Okay. And then, my second and last question is, how are we notifying the different agencies or potential nonprofits of opportunities for potentially receiving it?
So, we have a growing list every year.
Okay.
What we try to do is, obviously, we inform those that have worked with us before and performed, you know, in the program. We notify those. We ask them to also forward it to any other agencies that we may not be aware of. There's always new agencies and nonprofits, you know, coming on board every year. We advertise it in the newspaper, and we send it out to local churches and community leaders to help us spread the word.
Okay. And then, do we do anything to help them fill out the packet, or if they have questions? Okay.
Yeah, we hold a technical workshop every year?
Correct, okay.
Um, to answer any questions, we will sit down one-on-one. This year, we actually had a new applicant that we met with, but?
Okay, thank you. That's kind of what I wanted to know, and I figured you were doing some of that, so I just wanted it to be stated. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate you asking that. I was going to ask a question concerning the application, and do we have any problems? Are people eliminating themselves because they don't do the application correctly? You seem to answer that question, that you're there if they need you. All right, any other comments or questions? Member Cole?
Uh, yes, my question is, when individuals come to you, is there a pipeline for them to go to if we can't fulfill their needs? Are there other avenues that you can direct them in to try to get assistance, like other organizations within Titusville that can help them? So, someone may come to you with a need that can't be fulfilled through this, but you know they may be able to go to North Brevard Sharing or, or some other organization within Titusville to get their needs fulfilled. Do we, do we do that? Do we refer?
Yeah, we, we encourage any new nonprofit that's looking to, uh, start looking to participate in grant programs, to look at partnering with existing agencies that have been through the process to kind of start that. We also, we welcome every year new, we like to see new applicants so that we can make sure that all of the gaps that are in services, you know, are, are being covered.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Member Nelson?
And Terry, fired. Right?
Say again, a missed night.
Terry, Terry, if I'm right, um, the county also has the CDBG grants along with the other cities, so it's not just us.
Yeah, that's correct. Every entitlement city that's within our consortium has the same RFP process annually that, and matter of fact, I think the majority of our nonprofits do get funding from each of those municipalities.
Thank you.
And I, I think we've said it, and it's clear, but I don't mind hearing you say it. How does someone know how to, to apply? How do they know these, these funds are out there?
By word of mouth, I think, is the, the most, um, I would say, popular way that we try to get it out. I think those agencies that have been with us for years, they're our source to try to get the information out there. Anytime we learn of a new agency, we usually learn about those through either they've contacting the Harry T. Moore Center to try to provide a service there, or they're, or they send a referral to the Harry T. Moore Center or to the city to help someone. We learn that there's these new agencies out there that are trying to come on board and provide services, so we try to include those in any email notifications that we send out.
And if you were searching our website, you could find it?
Yes. Yeah, we do post.
I would think that if I was in that situation, and I'm looking for something, have no idea where to look, I'd do two things. I'd probably call the Harry T. Moore Center. That seems to be the place where you can direct everybody everywhere.
Right.
And then, if not, I'll go to the website and look around to see. So, I just want to make sure that's out there, that, you know, we may not call you on the phone and say, hey, have you applied? But we're here for you.
Right, yes, sir.
I wanted that out there. Okay, appreciate that. Anybody else? All right, with that, you guys go ahead and get us going here.
Second half of our presentation. So, when we're developing our annual action plan for CDBG, and which includes an element of the home program because we're part of the consortium, these are the strategies that were developed through the consolidated plan process, which was your five-year plan that provides guidance on developing an annual plan. So, we do look at these. We ask our sub-receipients that are helping us provide services, they also will follow these guidelines. This is just a snapshot of the last 10 years of your CDBG and home revenues. You'll see that we're finally coming back up and getting back to where we used to be prior to 2010, so that's good news. So, for FY 24, we always start with the base of our current grant, which is $347,000 to start our process of designing our programs. So, what that would look like for next year, if that amount holds true, I would hope that we would probably get a little more, but we go into it conservatively and start at that point. This is how the availability of funds would look like. Excuse me. So, if you recall, talking about the NRSA, over the five-year consolidated plan process, the city has dedicated that remaining portion after public services and administration all to the NRSA target area for that five-year consolidated plan process. Home, again, based on this year's allocation, that's what your breakdown would look like for next year. Additionally, and we are working with Brevard County through a consultant to design a home American Rescue Plan for affordable housing, and that would be the share that would go to projects that would serve Titusville as well. All right, so before we hear from our agencies, Tracy will go introduce the applicants that we received, and we'll have them give you a short presentation on their application.
Real quick, 20% cap on administration costs. And again, some of the things I ask, I have a pretty good idea, but I like to have it out there for other people to hear, because that's always going to be the question we're going to hear. What and who is the administration? What and, what and who? Give me a brief explanation of what it takes to administer.
Sure. So, that covers the Neighborhood Services Department staff to manage and oversight of the program, ensure the city's in compliance with the regulations governing that program. It also covers other departments such as, excuse me, finance, that handles the financial side and reconciliation of those grants. And then, any other administrative things such as supplies, notifications to the public on availability of programs. Those are kind of, sums up the administrative side.
Okay, and you have to have administration to administer. I get that.
Pretty much, yes.
Have you ever gotten over the 20% cost of administration?
No, sir. We're usually right under the 20%.
All right, very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, we have up first Aging Matters in Brevard with their Senior Nutritional Program.
Thank you, guys. Come on up, and as you do, I skipped on Member Nelson. You want to add one more thing?
Well, it's, it's more like two things, so I, I can wait until afterwards.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
If you don't forget.
Oh, well, just hit that button. Yeah. All right, how you doing?
I'm well. Good evening, members. Mr. Mayor, my name is Craigad Minsen Wood. I'm the Program Director of Brevard Senior Nutrition at Aging Matters in Brevard, and that means it is my honor and privilege to lead our Brevard Community Kitchen, our 12 congregant dining rooms throughout the county, as well as Meals on Wheels of Brevard County. Our CDBGS this year is up $2,000 from last year. For fiscal year '23, '24, the Brevard Senior Nutrition Program is proposing to serve 4,000 meals to 25 unduplicated seniors in the city of Titusville. Each individual is projected to receive 160 meals at $3 apiece. That amount, that $3 supplements the meal. The rest of the cost of the meal is actually funded through OAA funds. The cost, as usual, is that we receive from the CDBG money itself, is simply dedicated to the meal, and it is, is not used for those administrative costs that tend to come up from time to time. It is strictly going to the meal itself. OAA typically funds the rest of that. Another program incomes funds the administrative costs. That daily cost of food per program is actually a little over $9 per meal, and the funding that we're getting from OAA, from the Old American Act, is about $5 a meal. We make up the difference through alternate funding sources, including CB, CDBG funding. We make up the difference through alternate funding sources, including CBG, CDBG funding. Projections through 2030 indicate that the population age 65 and older is expected to increase by 53% in Brevard County. And the 85-plus age group is projected to increase by 69%, increasing demand for services such as Meals on Wheels and seniors at lunch. Aging Matters has been facing a growing waitlist already for its services as the demand for services exceeds the ability to provide them. I stood before this group two years ago and was excited to say that we eliminated the waitlist. But as we're continuing to be an aging population, our waitlist is up again in Titusville. It's still the smallest waitlist that we have in the county. But I think currently in Titusville, we have about 70 clients that are waiting for services, for Meals on Wheels. We do not have a waiting list for our dining rooms. In North Brevard, including the city of Titusville, there are 20 routes for Meals on Wheels and about 125 volunteers that help us get people fed each and every day. They pick up their food that's prepared at our kitchen in Coco at our new location, which is right over at the Trinity Lutheran Church here in Titusville. More than 90% of the seniors that are served here in Titusville meet the HUD income guidelines for very low to low income. With Meals on Wheels, I think everybody knows it's more than a meal. You you see it on TV, you hear about it. But if you've delivered Meals on Wheels before, if you know anyone that receives it, you, more than a meal becomes more than just a saying, more than a slogan. The visit by the volunteers is just as important as the meal they receive itself. The meal is, can frequently, unfortunately, be the only meal they receive all day. The knock at the door, the person that's delivering it may be the only human interaction they get all day. So it also becomes that critical welfare check, that safety check, to make sure that there's eyes on that person, to make sure they're okay. We we take a lot of pride in the fact that should we go to a house and that client isn't home and we're expecting them to be home and they didn't cancel their meal for the day, it sets off an entire chain of events that still standing there is just reflecting on is amazing. And we do this every day. It starts with phone calls to neighbors and relatives, emergency contacts, doctors' office, hospitals, all the way up to calling the men and women of the Titusville Police Department to meet us at the houses to make sure that they're okay. We take a lot of pride in the fact that we, with over 1,200 Meals on Wheels clients, we don't close our doors, we don't end our day until every one of our clients is accounted for. So when we say it's more than a meal, it's more than a meal for a lot of reasons. Similarly, for for our dining rooms, for the seniors that can't, that can leave the home and get out, we offer the 12 dining rooms where they can go and enjoy a meal every day and get that same, get interact, get the same nutritious meal while getting, receiving programming, playing bingo, having healthy interactions that keep them from going, from staying homebound. I tell my staff, I want our dining rooms to be the destination for our clients today. Give them someplace to go and keep moving, to keep them from becoming homebound and sitting at home. I am, for those of you that know me, I'm proud to live in North Brevard. Our dining room right here in Titusville, we was the last dining room to reopen after COVID. We worked with the St. James Church to try to get our dining room reopened. And due to leadership changes with the church, for whatever reason, it became incredibly difficult. So we were excited to reach out and partner with Brian Wallen's team at North Brevard Charities and come up with a completely new model. Turn the page and let's try something completely new. And that's what we're doing right over here at the Harry T. Moore Center. We opened it in December and it is very exciting. I was in Palm Bay the other day and we were talking about this project. Instead of just going to a dining room and having lunch every day and maybe playing bingo and then heading back home until tomorrow, what we're doing here in Titusville is is an integrated service model. We were bringing clients in to have lunch, play bingo, engage in the same activities. But we're also leveraging the resources that are there with Harry T. Moore Center and the city. And we're bringing services in so that so that we can do a better job of engaging. The same way that Meals on Wheels is more than just a meal, we want our dining rooms to be more than just that experience. So we were extremely excited to pilot this program right here and then push it out all across the county. And when I talk about an integrated services model, what I mean is is they're not just coming to have lunch. They're going to come and have lunch, and they're going to play the bingo because do not take away their bingo. But they're going to play their bingo, but at the end of that, but at the end of the program, there's other folks that are coming in. If you want to hold somebody's attention, get Ember the Clown, get Carrie to come over from the fire department and have Chief Laus stop by. They have, talk about just being on fire and excited about something. Brian's folks at North Brevard Charities jumped on board so quickly with this program and presented an entire list of activities that we're going to be rolling out and speakers to come in. But none of this happens, none of these engagements happen if we if we don't have the dining room, which is why it's so critical. Nothing was, I think I aged tremendously every time that we would get out and see these seniors that relied on these dining rooms to stay, to get out of their house. We just, you don't want them sitting there at home, you know, day after day, getting stagnant. And the next thing you know, they're signing up for Meals on Wheels. These dining rooms are critically important to keep them moving. And so all during COVID, while, even after COVID, when the other dining rooms are reopening to 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 come over here to the church every two weeks and to hand out frozen boxes of meals because we still wanted to get people fed, but we didn't have a place to do it. That was tough. And I'm telling you, it aged me. Because you start by seeing the clients that that used to come to the dining room, showing up to get their boxes of food, and then they're not showing up, their kids are coming for them, and and you just, the numbers start draining down. There is something about serving lunch in the heart of the community. And I'm so grateful to to North Brevard Charities for for teaming up with us to get that dining room open again. So our ask is up $2,000. I don't want to drag this out anymore. Let's just get on to the the exciting statistical stuff. Our goals for the program is we will serve 25 unduplicated clients with 4,000 meals in the city of Titusville through home-delivered meals and our seniors of lunch program, our dining room. Goal two, the participants, the participants in Meals on Wheels and seniors at lunch will be less isolated and feel less isolated and lonely. Goal three, we'll continue to offer nutrition education, promote the city of Titusville social programs such as such as Family Friends CPR with Titusville Fire Department, Financial Literacy Workshops, as well as other social, social programs. Our outcomes, outcome number one, 65% of our clients will self-report that they eat a more well-balanced meal because of participating in our programs. I'm always excited to share our numbers from the previous years. So the outcome is 65%. Last year, 87% reported that they eat more well-balanced meals. Outcome number two, 60% of the clients will self-report that the meals provided have helped them improve their nutrition. Our actual number last year in the survey was 95%. And finally, outcome number three, 60% of the clients will self-report that they feel less lonely and isolated due to the daily visit from a volunteer or by participating in the in the dining room. The goal is 60% and the actual number is over 88%. So that is, that is the presentation in and of itself. I'd be happy to take your questions, but I just want to say one last time. Can't tell you how happy you are to have the dining room. It's the first time I've had the chance to stand before you guys with it actually open. And I would encourage you guys to be active and involved and stop over and have lunch with us sometime. But I'm happy to take your questions.
For, that's a daily thing in the dining room there?
Monday through Friday, yes, sir.
And what's the timeframe?
10:00 AM, 10 to 1:00. Currently, it's 10 to 1:00 and I think in the spring, we're going to expand it to 10 to 2:00.
Very good, very good. I definitely would like to get over there. I'll say the same thing I pretty much say every time you guys present. I can, my mom was one who benefited from the Meals on Wheels. And as you said so clearly, the meal was important, but the knock on the door was more important. She got to that point where she had Alzheimer's and it was, it was hard to make her eat. So she was at least reminded to do so, and then we would be there to try to get her to eat. But, you know, she just sat there sometimes and waited for that knock on the door. And I can't tell you, I feel like your service with the meals is amazing. I feel that your, the people who volunteer that I speak to all the time, their communication with those people is amazing. And I think that you you are many times lifesavers and every time, you're at least quality of life extenders. And I appreciate that. And I think that, obviously, I think the request is very well done and well needed. Member Nelson?
I was just going to say Rotary Club, she used to go over and serve meals over there. And some of our members, at one point, got upset because a person drove up in a very expensive car. And they were like, why are we serving these people? But what I noticed was they would show up two hours before dinner was served so they could sit and visit. And that was their outlet.
Yep.
And I think the communication, the socialization is just, it's more important than the food.
And our Titusville Rotary Club, we have a route, we deliver Monday through Friday.
Yeah.
So it's important to get back.
So I think it's great. Thank you.
As always, that is an awesome presentation. Sometimes, and we've been here, some of us have been here a while, and I get it and I totally understand it. But I'd like to hear it again. And some of the stats and facts are scary because now I'm in those stats and facts.
We're all aging.
65 plus, as I wrote it, 50, going to go up 53% by 2030?
Yeah. Yeah.
Herman, you're adding to that number every day. Anyway, any other comments or questions? I see none. Thank you so much for that, just for the presentation for what you do.
I do have one more, sorry.
You know what? They do it to me every single time.
I know, I'm sorry. No, I was thinking about it because I, I think I did visit. It's been, it was before COVID. But I was like a guest speaker, I think, for, do you guys still do the guest speaker?
Absolutely.
You do? Okay.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay, because I was trying to remember. That's what I'm up here thinking.
I love to bring as many people as that I can. I am, I am kind of a bulldog. Anybody that wants to come in has got to run their presentation by me because I want to protect our clients and make sure that there's no solicitation, you know. There's a duty of care there, but absolutely.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, it was really fun when I went, so thank you.
It's still fun. Please come back.
Anything else, member Stokoe? You sure? Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Only problem is if I went, they might think I'm supposed to be in there eating.
He forgets to push his button sometimes.
I'm five years away myself, so.
Boy, I remember those days. Neither is Mr. Cole. Never mind. Yes, ma'am, we're ready.
Next, we have Brevard Alzheimer's with their non-emergency transportation program.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Sean Oldham with the Brevard Alzheimer's Foundation, also known as Joe's Club. We are asking for kind of a weird number, $7,490.50. And the reason for that is because we wanted a nice round number for our number of trips. So it's, that's going to cover 13, 1,350 one-way trips for our Safe Ride Non-Emergency Medical Transport Program. This program also, not only does it transport people to and from our day center on park, but also to doctor's appointments, grocery deliveries. We have a mobile food pantry that we started due to the COVID pandemic. We also transport people not only in the city limits, but from Titusville to other appointments as well. We have many veterans that we transport to the Vieira Clinic, you know, early in the morning so they can go over and make their trip over to Lake Nona if necessary. But all of our, all of our drivers are paid drivers. They're not volunteers, so they are definitely going to show up when they have an appointment or they need to get someone to the grocery store, or they're bringing people to our, to Joe's Club for the day. We have the second-largest paratransit fleet outside of SCAT. Paratransit being vehicles that have lifts and the capability to transport people that are non-ambulatory. We also, so last year, we did roughly 37,000 miles in the city of Titusville alone. Again, bringing people food, bringing people to doctor's appointments, bringing people to the grocery stores, again, bringing people to Joe's Club as well. The average trip you're looking at is going to be about an hour and a half. So that's time that our driver will pick you up, they'll take you to your appointment, they'll wait with you. They won't just drop you off and, and, you know, say, see you later. They'll wait, wait with you there so that you aren't waiting, you know, four hours like if you do with SCAT. You know, SCAT's a great service, but with their paratransit system, they can pick you up and then they'll come back when they're ready, you know, around four, four hours later or so. So our drivers, you know, stay there with the person and, and, you know, take them home when when they're ready. The unit rate that we're asking is $5.55, $5.55. And that is leveraged with other programs, United Way, DOT contract that we have as well. This is only going to pay for fuel and the drivers, the labor for that doesn't go to any capital expenses, you know, we're not buying anything with it. But yeah, I mean, the big thing that we kind of expanded upon this year was our mobile food pantry. We have a partnership with Second Harvest and we are delivering three times a month now, we deliver about 300 boxes of food to homebound seniors countywide. Many of those are in the Titusville area. We bring food from Melbourne up to Titusville and then we, you know, disperse from our center. And that moved, that bumped up to three times a month now. We're delivering a non-perishable box, a produce box, and also a protein box that we just started this past, past week. And that's all, the food's all paid for. The transportation to get it out is not. So that's kind of where we, you know, go to resources like this to kind of help pay for those trips. That's pretty much it. Any questions?
Very good. And again, as I noted earlier, before my mom passed away, she went through the Alzheimer's, which is a very, as everybody knows, a very difficult situation. And as she was easing into it, Joe's Club was a real important factor for her. At Joe's Place, I guess they call it, whatever it is, you know what it is. And Joe's Club. And actually, through Joe's Club, when she was there, I was on the Alzheimer's Board of Directors. And part of the problem there was I met in Melbourne every, it was kind of tough, but.
Now we have Zoom.
I'm sorry?
Now we have Zoom.
There you go. Outstanding facility. Joe's is, it's full of life. And no pun intended there, it's just full of life. There's a spirit in there when you go in there. And most everybody's excited. Some people, you know, they're watching. And I've visited several times before COVID, kind of backed away from everything when that started and hopefully get back to going in there and seeing some of those folks have a good time. I think the transportation is extremely important. And again, that goes back to before all that even started. My mom, we had to take the keys away from my mom. She couldn't drive. We all worked. We couldn't, you know, if we, you're not there and those folks aren't there, she's just there until we can get off of work and get there. So very pleased with your, what you do and the caring and sharing you do with that population every day. They'd be lost without a simple thing like picking up the groceries for them. I don't think people realize what that's like until you're sitting there and nobody can get them for you. So my hat's off to you and I certainly appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to add to that or we good? All right, well, thank you so much for what you do.
Next, we have Catholic Charities with their Family Stability Program.
How are y'all doing? We're nervous too, so don't worry about it. No, don't. You don't have to worry about us at all. That's right.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Emma Peña and I'm the program director for Catholic Charities and Family Stabilities. So we oversee the nine counties and I'm presenting for thirty thousand dollars. A request for thirty thousand dollars and it's mainly for homeless prevention. The request for the CDBG Public Service Funding will be providing rent, mortgage, and utility assistance to people who without our help may lose their home or apartment. And a lot of the times they lose light, water, because they don't have ways to pay. Because something that may happen, I mean, a lot with the cost of living right now, people are trying to make ends meet. A lot of the times Florida is one of those states that you need a car. So if a car breaks down, sometimes they have to take the money and put it into the car and the rent falls behind. Two people live in the same household, one loses a job, that puts the rent behind and the utilities. So people contacting Catholic Charities will work with case managers through the initial intake information, including confirming address of residence, of amount of income to show eligibility for services based on the low moderate income. Only people living in the city of Titusville limits will be assisted using the request funding and will be living below the poverty level. Although we will be using the awarded funding to serve Titusville residents, we anticipate reaching clients from the target area because we have an office located in the zip code. The client's situation will be reviewed and the case manager will work with the clients to determine the ability. The case manager will work with the landlords or utility company to determine if one-time assistance can help the household in their current home and will make the necessary payments directly to the landlord or utility companies to avoid interruption in either or. As part of the effort to help the household become self-sufficient, the case manager will help the client prepare a budget to help assure the family will have sufficient funds to remain in their home and will follow up with the client to help the remain of their budget. Note that twenty-six thousand dollars will be used directly for landlords and utility companies to keep low-income people in their homes as described in the budget below, which is in the next page. We anticipate six clients will receive rent assistance, only two will receive utility assistance, and six clients will receive both rent and utility assistance for a total of fourteen Titusville residents remaining in the home through this funding. In addition, we will have three hundred and thirty-four bus passes available for Titusville residents lacking transportation. Keeping people in stable housing benefits the community by not increasing the level of local homelessness. It benefits the client by helping them maintain the basic needs for shelter. As noted, one hundred percent of the clients served with this funding will be residents of Titusville. We do have two offices, one in Cocoa, in fifty-one forty-seven U.S. One by Blessed Sacrament Church. And we also have another local office in seven twenty-five South DeLeon Avenue in Titusville. We share that office with Brevard Homeless Coalition and the Community of Hope. We turn in the back, we have the budget, a description of the budget. We do hold a sixteen, sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars right now for the same kind of grant. And that is what we are doing right now from the Titusville office. So we just want to make sure that we can continue the services moving forward towards next year. Any questions?
You guys are going to speak. Are you there for support? You good? Okay. I will just say that, that as you're speaking, I'm thinking, I love this meeting. The people out here, everybody who presents, no doubt, and I'm thinking, and as you're saying your thing, that there are a lot of people that see people who are homeless and there's a lot of people who see people who are, need to get their electricity on and they say that's a terrible thing. And you guys look at it and say, what can we do to fix it? And I, and rest assured, we have needs, every city has needs all over the place and we need people like you to step up and do what you do. I was at Titusville High School for thirty-five years and sometimes you're not sure who's even homeless. And then you kind of figure that out. But some of the things that weren't hard, that were harder to figure out were the kids that haven't had electricity at their house for the last week or two. And, you know, well, certainly even if they do have a computer, you can't use it without electricity. In many cases, you can't take a hot shower and things like that. When you were speaking, it kind of came back to me, some of the kids that I ran into or came to me or some other kids said about this guy, you know, Coach hasn't had electricity for two weeks. That step up to that need is appreciated. And, you know, and again, even I at the high school level, I could keep my eye out for the homeless and they're living in a car. But sometimes it just goes right by that they didn't have the money to pay for the electricity or the water. And for you guys to have your ear to the ground on that is more than appreciated. Member Stokoe?
I have two questions. One, it says here, this might be for you guys or staff, that you guys have received funding from the city of Titusville before? Was it this type of?
This year is the first year.
Okay, okay. And then, so this past year or this current budget year?
This current budget year.
Current one, okay. And then, when it comes to the criteria, so if somebody did want to receive rent assistance or utility assistance, are you, do you guys use the same criteria as a different, as other organizations or do you guys have a different criteria?
So I believe, right, everybody's different. Everybody's different. Like I said before, sometimes they work, they have sustainability once we help them. I mean, it's just a bill came along, a medical bill, a car bill. I mean, something happened and they fell behind. So a lot of the times what we do is we make sure that they stay sustainable. So, and that is through the case managers. They made phone calls to the homes after we helped them. We also have, like, I mean, we have other services along Catholic charities and we provide them all those services. So what we're doing right now is that we're providing people with budget classes. So what we do is that we refer them to someone that is already working along with Catholic charities and that person will call them and make sure that they talk about the budget. Why is it that you fell behind? How can we put maybe five dollars on the side so when this happens again, you don't fall behind? COVID has been another thing. I mean, people have fallen behind the hurricane, Ian and Nicole. People lost hours. So, I mean, we get different things. Most of the criterias are the same. I mean, we make sure that the person has a job, that they can stay, you know, that they could sustain themselves like moving forward. And if they're not, then we try to work with that and see what is it that we can do. We also have a lot of resources that we try to share with them and make sure that once they get the help, then they start using the resources and they stay in communication with the case managers to make sure that we, whichever way we can help them.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. Do you have something? No? Okay. Anything else up here? Very good. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your caring and sharing. Thank you.
Next, we have Community of Hope with their Housing Supportive Services Program.
How you doing? Good. Thank you for being here. Member Cole, thank you for being here too. We're gonna try, we're gonna try to get out of here before it's bedtime. We'll be good. I know. I have nobody over here. All right, here we go.
Okay, so my name is Brittany Arp. I'm here on behalf of Community of Hope and I'm going to start off with a small letter from my boss, Drew Warren.
Good, very good.
All right, so esteemed council members, staff, and fellow service providers, I apologize that I cannot be here in person this evening. Unfortunately, this meeting fell on the night of our board meeting. As this is the first meeting of the new year, I do not feel comfortable missing the board meeting. I have asked Brittany Arp to come in my place and present this project to you. I did so because she is far and away the best example of the reason you should fund this project. Yeah, this is going to be embarrassing for me, so I apologize. Brittany, her husband Jared, and their daughter Kaylee are former residents in our Transitional Housing Program. They are working on becoming homeowners and currently reside in one of the permanent housing rental units. Last year, Community of Hope received a grant to help run classes designed to help struggling families. The Arp family attended these classes and Brittany currently, Brittany, currently a college student, started to assist the teachers of these courses. She now helps arrange, selects a class, writes the syllabi, and handle administrative issues. In fact, Brittany helped write the grant proposal before you this evening. In short, Brittany Arp is homeless, receives Transitional Housing and Supportive Services, has had a chance to stabilize her household and seek self-improvement, and has capitalized on these opportunities. We want to extend these opportunities to more families in Titusville and Brittany is the exemplar of the outcome that your investment can yield. Regardless of how you choose to allocate the CDBG funds, Community of Hope supports Titusville and will continue to collaborate with all the providers working to improve the lives of Titusville residents. Thank you, Drew Warren. And then I have a synopsis of the CDBG application. So we are asked, Community of Hope is asking for thirty-six thousand and forty-four dollars. It's going to allow us to expand our impact in Titusville. The people we plan to serve are Titusville families who are homeless or at risk of becoming homeless. These households will be low to moderate income and reside within the city. Most will be in the South Street neighborhood, re, visible, re, sorry. This, yes, strategy area and the services will be conducted at the Harry T. Moore Center. My apologies.
No worries.
Community of Hope will provide base management services focusing on screening and intake for programs with funding for rental assistance, homeless services, and housing services. In addition, we will conduct classes designed to help families improve their lives and become self-sustaining. The outcome, the program will reach and screen at least a hundred and twenty households. At least ninety-six households will receive ongoing case management services. At least six of these families will be housed and an additional six will receive temporary shelter. At least three hundred and twenty hours of psychoeducational material will be delivered. While the investment of thirty-six thousand dollars in the rise up of Titusville program is small, the impact will be great as it will bring exponentially more services into the community.
Any questions or comments from anybody? First of all, I thank you for being here. At first, when I, I saw you up here and he couldn't be here, had to be in a meeting and I didn't know your entire story, I think, well, no pressure, good luck to you, right?
Thank you.
So, so you get to do the presentation. I can't think of a better person to send to do the presentation than you.
Thank you.
You know, you can, gosh, don't want to do that, but you could get teary-eyed. And when you, when you see something that has definitely benefited you and you're willing to stand here and, and speak to it, I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. And again, I go back to, I love this particular night of meetings because it's a chance for us as a council to be able to do some concrete help and have people out there that are willing to do what it takes to get it done. And again, it's, you're one of those people that doesn't just talk the talk, you walk the walk and we got all people ready to talk now. So, member Stokoe?
Are you seeing classes at Eastern Florida?
I am.
You look familiar. Did you, did I have you as a student?
Bachelors.
That's what I thought.
Bachelors Expo.
Yes, okay.
I just started my bachelor's degree.
Good. I'm so proud of you. I thought, man, good. Okay.
Well, good. Member Stokoe's getting older too. Member Nelson?
Brittany?
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to come down and talk to you guys. There's no phone number on here.
Oh, gosh. Okay, I will get one for you. I do.
Yeah, I'm like, gee, where's the phone number at?
I will get one for you, yes, ma'am.
Okay, please. Thank you.
Member Cole?
Yes, mine is a more of a general statement to all the applicants. And, you know, I look at the numbers down here and I was, I'm on the Parish Foundation Board and about five years ago, I guess, we stopped doing this because we kind of ran out of money. And I'm so happy, you know, I was on that board and I was on it because I enjoyed doing this, just as Mayor Diesel mentioned. But we really appreciate the kind of services that you provide in our community. Because these are the kinds of services, I mean, obviously, as a city, we can't provide it. But we have you providing them and I just want to say basically, on behalf of myself, thank you.
And we'll end with that for you. Thank you so much. I appreciate, again, for you to stand up here like this. I don't even have enough words. Thank you very much. We move on.
Next, we have South Brevard Women's Center with their Domestic Violence Services Program.
How you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
It's always tough to be last.
Good evening. I'm Cynthia Dennison. I'm the Victim Services Director with the Titusville Office of the Women's Center of Brevard. Because of the ongoing support that we've received from the city of Titusville through the CDBG grant for fiscal year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two, the Women's Center of Brevard was able to provide fifteen thousand two hundred and seventy-one services to one thousand six hundred and forty-seven individual victims of crime in the Titusville area. Examples of some of those services that were provided are stays in our emergency safe house, crisis intervention, both in person and via our twenty-four-hour domestic violence and sexual assault helplines, assistance with emergency financial needs, assistance with completing applications for victims' crime compensation, and with filing protective orders. For those of you that aren't familiar with the Women's Center of Brevard, we've been around since nineteen seventy-five. We believe that no victim of violence, regardless of their socio-economic status, should be without the care and support needed to heal and live a life free from abuse while providing a safe environment for their family. We've had a presence in Titusville since twenty-ten and enjoy strong partnerships with Titusville Police Department, Parish Hospital, and countless other agencies and local families. It is because of the support from people like you in this room and our partners that we are able to continue to do what we do. Despite the number of clients that we've already served, the continued need for our services in our community is demonstrated through the most recent numbers shown in the Uniform Crime Report. Four hundred and thirty domestic violence reports were reported to Titusville Police Department, including one murder and eighty-two aggravated assaults. Many of us might know that those numbers are just a fraction of the real impact in our community as many victims suffer in silence. For many victims, they never report to police. We are the first agency they reach out to. Our mission is to empower these families by providing counseling, education, and information. And we do this through four core programs. The first core program is our Victim Services Program, which provides victims of domestic violence, stalking, sexual assault, and human trafficking with advocacy to help address their needs for safety, stability, and emotional support. The second core program is our Counseling Department. We provide free individual and group services for victims of crime. Our therapists can assist with helping heal from the immediate trauma as well as learning general life coping skills. Next is our Prevention Program. Our Prevention Program provides our community partners and individuals with information that allows them to help prevent violence in our community. This includes presentations at all four Eastern Florida campuses, at FIT, from municipalities such as the staff of the City of Palm Bay, as well as in collaboration with other partner agencies. Our prevention team also focuses on providing information to middle school and high schoolers in our area to help them learn how to build healthy boundaries. in our area to help them learn how to build healthy boundaries and develop healthy relationships. Finally, we have our Housing Program. That encompasses both our emergency safe houses that are here in Titusville, as well as in Melbourne, as well as our long-term Transitional Housing Program. That Transitional Housing Program is up to 24 months, and it's an ongoing supportive setting in which women and their children who have been victims of violence can live long-term while they work on goals to repair. We are asking you tonight for support for our emergency safe house and our victim services programs. The safe house provides a safe place for women and children in our community that are experiencing violence, and allows them to have time to stabilize and rebuild further futures. Residents stay an average of two months, but stays can be as short as a few days for somebody that maybe has family out of state that we're going to help them relocate to, or as long as six months. We can house up to three families or 12 individual women at a time. Advocacy and counseling services are provided free of charge while residents stay with us, and we help them work on both dealing with the immediate impacts of the crime they're dealing with, but as well as setting goals for the future. We follow up with our clients at three, six, and 12-month intervals after they leave the program, and our latest reports show that at 12 months, 85% of our clients are reporting that they are still living violence-free lives away from abuse. The expenses that we are requesting assistance with range from help with paying utility bills at the safe house, to purchasing household items and cleaning supplies, food, security measures, maintenance, and a portion of some of the salaries for the staff advocates. Some final notes about our program. The program addresses the national objectives of providing services to low-income persons. 100% of the people that enter our safe house program are classified by HUD as either extremely low or very low income. We also address the city's consolidated planned priority of encouraging self-sufficiency among adults, specifically women who have fled violent lives and need your support to become independent. We thank you for hearing our proposal, and I'm happy to take any questions about our services.
Thank you so much for your presentation, and thank you for what you do and what you represent. I think I said this at the last meeting, I think we all do, wouldn't it be great if we didn't need you?
Yeah, it's, it's a weird field to be in, when you wake up every day and hope, gosh, I become, I hope I become obsolete. I hope nobody needs me today.
And unfortunately, with the numbers that you've just stated, that's not going to happen anytime soon. So with that said, it's imperative, it's really not an option. We need to have you. I really like some of the things you said, and I'm familiar with the program, and again, we've had presentations, but it's nice to hear it over again, what's going, and the numbers, those numbers change, but the numbers re-edify that, you know, it's important, beyond important. But I like that you're an immediate safe place. That's huge. In that moment, in that night, in that day, whatever, it's an immediate safe place, immediate counseling. But what's also important is you have follow-up counseling, and follow-up three, six, and 12 months. Because it's one thing to, to be there for that night, it's another thing to what's going on three months, six months. I, you've touched all the bases. And then, oh, the housing program. I mean, again, it's wonderful, hey, we really helped you not go. Again, all the bases. And, and another one, and I could go on and on, but the other one, having, still being in education, in my 41st year in education, 35 at Titusville High School, is the in-school, the preventative words, the, again, the training, or the education's probably a better word for those students who are, I don't know, 14, 15, 16, 17. And then when, and if, God forbid, something happens, they're on top of it. Again, you guys, it's not just here, let's take care of you and go. This is, you know, let's, first of all, try to prevent, and then let's be there for you in your time of need, let's counsel you when you get here, let's counsel you further, and let's see how you're doing down the road, and if you need some housing, let's talk. My hat's off to you beyond words. Anyone else want to comment on this one? I guess I said all the words. But the last words we'll say is thank you, and again, we can both pray that there'll be no need for you, but that's not, that's not going to happen. So thank you for being there for this need. Thank you very much.
Staff just wants to also state that we appreciate every one of the agencies that help our citizens and community with services that the city, you know, can't provide. We, I just wanted to touch base, because we heard a little bit about criteria and things like that. So I want to mention that the criteria for any CDBG-funded programs is the same statewide. We don't have any additional criteria, other than we have a scoring system. If we specialize or want a particular aspect in our program for like a target area or the neighborhood revitalization area, we will seek additional services for those area. But the criteria for funding is the same and should be the same from city to city.
Very good. And you can add to this, or city manager, you can kind of summarize a little bit. When would this come in front of us as a council again? When will this happen?
Time lines in the package, isn't it?
Yeah, we're shooting for March. We should have some recommendations to you, and then we'll try to finalize that sometime in May.
And then what will happen is, that will come before us, and then we will take our vote to approve.
So, again, thank you to all the agencies that help neighborhood services in the city do what we do. Without them, we wouldn't be able to help bridge the gaps in, in the community with services. We just have one last piece for our city program that I wanted to touch base on.
Hold up one second, just in case, this is a time, member Stokoe.
Just want to clarify, so I know the requests that we heard were just a little over 100,000. Did you, can you clarify how much available funds we do have to allocate out?
So if we utilize this year's allocation, we're going to be limited to about 52,000.
Okay.
There are going to be some flexibilities in that, once we get into the heart of each of the RFPs, to see if the, any expansions or requests are geared towards the NRS A area. If so, then we can go over that 15% cap for those specific services.
Okay, and if they are?
There's no limit.
That's, okay, that's what I was looking like. Okay, thank you.
Member Nelson.
So, on your slide 26, you're talking about NRS A activities at 225. Would that be part of that?
I'm sorry, I don't. Yes.
Okay. So potentially.
That 225,000 is for infrastructure improvements in the NRS A area.
Okay, it can only be used for that?
Well, not only, no, but that's the balance after the 15%. So yes, a portion of that 225, we will utilize for anything in the target area that the NRS A plan, as we implement that. And the next presentation will show you phase one of what we'll work on in addition to expanded public services.
Okay.
Okay, I see no more. Go ahead, thank you.
So, for this year, we get the opportunity to implement the first phase of our NRS A plan. As you may recall, last year, we had the opportunity to work with local residents of the, of the South Street Target area to design a plan, which was really guided and formed by them on their needs for their community and what they would like to improve. So for the implement, implementation this year, again, just to highlight that the plan was approved by council on December 12th. So we're going to hopefully get back together with the community soon to work on the implementation phase. So we're, we're going to reengage with them and the businesses and leaders that were involved in that, designing that plan. And we're going to set priority and schedules on those implementations of the plan. Again, this is a five-year cycle, so we're gonna get started on the first phase. So for the first phase, we're going to take the highlights of those discussions with the community. We already have some projects in the work, we're just going through the procurement process. So we'll be doing some tree plantings, we are installing benches that are covered, shade-covered, some lighting improvements, along with some signage that the community will design, help design, for some historical information and wayfinding in their community. So along with that, that is the first phase of that. Again, this is the starting point. We may find through the process that priorities will change depending on the availability of not only contractors, but materials. We're still finding our way, you know, post-COVID through this process that seems to hinder us a little bit. But that are, those are our goals for phase one, and we look, we're very excited to get started on, on the implementing the plan. Any questions on that? Be glad to answer.
I look forward to seeing that and hearing more about that. That's, that's one that a lot of people talk about. Anybody else? I see none. Are you good?
With that, Mayor, we are done with our presentations, and any final questions?
I see none, but I would say, and I think we've all kind of said that, thank you to you all. Again, there are people who look at something and say, that's sad, and there's people that look at it and say, let's fix it. And I appreciate you guys for that. And there are others. We certainly have some other volunteer groups in our city that do a very good job, and I'm very pleased. And I don't want to go past without saying to you and your entire group down at the Harry T. Moore Center, you are, you're pretty much our front line for these sort of things. You know, an awful lot of times, our police department might be able to inform you of, hey, we got this need, or this or that. But when it comes to time to implement things and, you know, try to get things fixed, and I know that I have sent many, a person your way, both of you, all of you, I want to thank you all for, you know, being there in the, yeah, again, frontline, and caring and sharing like you do. So I appreciate that very much. Anything else from council? I see none, city manager.
Final agenda item is public comment, and since this is a special meeting, comments from the public must relate directly to the items that we've heard.
Okay. Any public comment? Three, two, one. I see none. City attorney?
No.
Ms. Parish, you good?
Yes, sir.
Willie Taylor, you all over there, no, you good? Good. Meeting adjourned, thank you guys very much.